States of America and through the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come again to see you and thank you, Lord God. Thank you for this day that you have made. Lord God, we just ask that you continue to keep our residents safe. Lord God, continue to guide us on this council, Lord. Continue to keep our police and our fire safe as well, in Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander, present. Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here. We have nine in chambers. Mayor's address.
Hi, nice to see everybody. Nice to see everybody in the council. I know everybody's here to talk about an event that occurred on August 17th. I'm going to hold up until the end of my report to give that part if you don't mind, so that we could just flow right into it. I imagine there's questions, so. Start off, met with the Hammond firefighters recently in the central firehouse, met with all the chiefs, met with the members of the shift that were on, as well as the administration, had good contact, discussion about the upcoming contract negotiations and some other challenges faced by the fire department, especially in regards to the recently closed hospital and how that's affected the members of the Hammond Fire Department, especially the members of the ambulance crews. Met also with the police recently, with all the captains and above, to discuss the high-tech crime unit and other matters that were important, as well as the upcoming contract negotiations were soon to take place. Recently, met with chairman of the Indiana House Ways and Means Committee in Indianapolis, Chairman Jeff Thompson, to talk about the upcoming legislative session, how that impacts the city Hammond, introduced myself and my team. I thought it was a very good meeting. Recently, met with executives from Johnson Controls, which is a big firm that is visiting Hammond in regards to a large upcoming economic development project. Thought it was a very good meeting. Can't really talk too much about it at this time, but it will be unveiling shortly, and I'll be discussing that with you at that time. Attended the soft opening for the Ninja Kids Action Park in Hessville at the Ice Cube Sports Complex, which was very nice, that I think it's officially open now, really nice for the youngsters. Also met with NIPSCO recently in regards to upcoming economic development projects where the city Hammond needs NIPSCO's help. I know City Controller Megan Flores is forward to you all, and you've all been discussing the following dates for the adoption of the 24 budget. I think we're all on the same page in regards to the dates. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. Gas station ordinance update, as you all know, we passed a gas station ordinance that says that all gas stations in the city Hammond have to shut down between hours of midnight and 5:00 a.m. We do have exceptions and parameters for gas stations that wish to stay open past midnight. At this point, we're receiving requests for hearings before the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety. We've received four requests from gas stations across the city to stay open past midnight. Four locations are 3350 Calumet, 7453 Indianapolis, 7305 Kennedy, and 2300 Indianapolis. Those hearings are set before the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety in this chamber on September 28th, October 5th, and October 12th. If you have any questions, any council members have questions, any members of the public could appear before that or submit your questions to the Board of Public Works and Safety. Recently held a job fair, which was attended by over 900 people. We had over 65 businesses. It was completely self-funded event, which is nice, with $8,500 worth of sponsorships. And over 20 people left the event that day with a brand-new job and plenty of other second interviews, and I'm happy to say, we even received quite a few new job prospects from that as well, for the city Hammond and all of our different agencies. You have for you today, a resolution to appoint, to approve a joint inter-local cooperative agreement with the Lake County Government, particularly the Lake County Council. Lake County Council members Dave Hamm and Lake County Councilwoman Christine Sid have together donated $2.1 million of their discretionary AARP funds to be used for the construction of Fire Station Number Two. The county council has passed a similar, a mirror resolution to the one that's before you, and hopefully you guys will consider that and pass that and help us construct Fire Station Number Two with the help of County Councilman Dave Hamm and County Councilwoman Christine Sid. And I want to thank both them for their help in financing this important project for Robertsdale. On October 17th, this is in regards to the severe rain event that occurred across North Hammond. On October 17th, the North Hammond section of our city experienced a severe rain event. Here's a brief overview. 4.24 inches of rain fell in the impacted area. I'll mention what the impacted area is in a second. I know you all know it, but what we describe as the impacted area. The intensity of rainfall was 1.05 inches in the first 15 minutes, and intensity of rainfall was 2.06 inches in an hour. Just for some quick references, two inches of rain across what we consider to be around three square miles is 108 million gallons of water. We received 4.24 inches in that section alone, which is a couple hundred million gallons just for that three-square-mile area. Our wastewater treatment plant has a design capacity of 68 million gallons a day. Hammond Sanitary District wastewater treatment plant was running at a rate of 100 million gallons a day that day, and it still wasn't enough. The CSO basin, which we spent $50 million of our money on, the Hammond Sanitary District spent over $50 million designing a new CSO basin, which is located right there on Columbia Avenue, right by the plant, was discharging during a storm event at a rate of 468 million gallons a day. And we, that's a reportable offense, it has to be reported to the EPA, because we did discharge, it's called a CSO event. We discharged basically into the river, passing through the CSO, which will catch the solids, but it's not completely treated water that goes into the Grand Calumet River, which ultimately wakes, makes its way into Lake Michigan. And as a frame of reference, when I first became mayor, we had about 10 CSO events a year, and now the goal of the US EPA, and with the consent decree we signed with the federal government, the goal is to have zero CSO events a year, one at the most. My father was mayor of the city Hammond in the 1980s and the 1990s. These were regular occurrence, CSO events were part of the strategy to combat stormwater, was just dump it in the river. Dump it in the river. We can't do that anymore. Unfortunately, when you dump it in the river, it makes its way into Lake Michigan, and that causes problems on its own. I'm not making excuses, these are just the facts. All of Hammond, we experienced four inches of rain during this event, that's over 470 million gallons of water just in the North Hammond's, three, three square miles of North Hammond section alone. All of Hammond Sanitary District's equipment functioned completely properly, there were no failures. Most of the heavy rain fell in this impacted area. We described the heavily impacted area as bordered by 137th Street to the north, Detroit Street on the south, State Line on the west, and White Oak to the east. That's the area we described as the impacted area, that's the area we were measuring, that's the area we describe as getting on its own of 468 million gallons of water. As of 9/25/23, at 10:00 a.m., a total of 467 residents experienced basement backups in that area, many ranging from a complete loss of personal property, loss of a lot of the, you know, the possessions in our basement. Rain rates across the city Hammond varied greatly during this event, it was really just the impacted area, 4.24 inches as I mentioned. Just to give you an idea, 115th and Atchison during that same event had only 1.34 inches of rain. Kennedy Avenue in Michigan had 1.5 inches of rain. Columbia Avenue and 177th had .8 inches of rain. This is a very localized event, but all that rain across the entire city goes to the same plant. A lot of people in the community talk about the floodgates weren't open. There are no floodgates. There are no pumps that weren't running backwards. These are fictions that are created and spread around the internet. Everything's automated in the Hammond Sanitary District. It's just like a sump pump that you have in your basement. If water level hits this high, this pump turns on, and everything was working properly. We had about six or seven times the amount of water hit the Hammond Sanitary District than it was rated for. Our system completely filled up, and when that happens, it's unfortunate, we have basement backups. I've had basement backups in my house, I didn't have it this time, we had hardly any rain where I live, but I've had basement backups before, and we will have basement backups again. Now, things that you could do to protect your home against these types of backups are getting backflow, backflow preventers. We have a system, we have a program offered through the Hammond Sanitary District. I'm embarrassed to say my home does not have one, so I preach about this, and I don't even have a backflow preventer in my house, and I'm combined in my house, so my house is at risk of suffering this like I have had before. And I preach it on the road, get a backflow preventer, get a backflow preventer. And I was talking to an engineer today, I don't even have one in my own house. So, what I'm preaching would fix the problem, and if I flooded in my basement, it would be horrible, and I've had before, and I know there's a lot of people that are suffering right now. And I want to point out that, right now, we're talking about North Hammond, but I'm looking across the council right now, and I know a few other district councilmen have had this very problem in their district as well. This is a problem, and it's not fun, and I apologize to everybody that's affected by it. It's a horrible thing, but there's nothing the city Hammond could have done to prevent that, there's nothing we could done, we could do to prevent it from happening. When we get hit that hard, there's nowhere for the water to go. I've heard some concerns from the community, and I want to address it. First off, I was going on the National Weather Service, talking to a lot of people that know a lot about water, just said, "How much is two inches of rainfall? What do you consider?" National Weather Service. Such intense rainfall rates can lead to rapid accumulation of water and pose several risks, including flash flooding, especially in areas with poor drainage or in urban areas with limited permeability. How big, another question, how big should a typical wastewater plant be for a community of 81,000 people? They said for a community 81,000 people, your peak flow should be right around 38 million gallons per day. Ours is rated for twice that, twice that. I realize we have customer communities, so FEMA assistance, we've, we are looking into this. I'm not saying no, but, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to meet the threshold requirements to qualify for FEMA assistance. We are exploring other routes for damage assistance from the state of Indiana, we're assessing that right now, including all the other events we've had. I know the council has questions about this, I don't want to just keep on talking. I think, I know, and one other question, it was, because we're getting a lot of questions in, in the mayor's office, and I accumulate them, and I try to answer them in front of you as well. Another one is, "Mayor, you treated Hessville different in 2020. Hessville flooded, and they got damage claims, and, you know, we would like the same treatment." First off, first off, in Hessville when that happened, I don't want to get into tit-for-tat, but the source of funding for that was COVID relief money, which is available from the federal government, which is no longer available. If we came up with such a program now, it would have to be funded out of the budget, and that would be something we have to decide, if there's city ordinance or some type of program that we want to offer, but that would have to be paid for outside of federal funds. So, anyway, I don't know if there's questions, I'm sure there are, but thank you for giving me a chance to address the council, and I'm open for questions.
Are there any questions from the council?
Hi, councilman.
Councilman Kowinski.
How far are we along in the process with FEMA? Have we made application of any kind?
No, we have to, we don't want to, first off, it has to be declared by the President of the United States a disaster area, hasn't happened. So then, the state of Indiana has to declare it a disaster area. I don't think that's being considered very strongly at all, we're trying to see if that's even a possibility, councilman, but it's based on lives lost, thankfully, there were none, right? It's based on property damage. Like, the last time I remember our part of the state being declared a disaster area was when we flooded in Munster, and the highway was shut down, and there was widespread property damage. I don't think there was deaths, but we were definitely declared a disaster area, FEMA was definitely part of that, so that would be, I'm trying to like, parallel what we're dealing with now versus that. I don't believe, I'm almost positive, in 2020, when Hessville flooded, there was about 1,700 homes affected, if I remember correctly, and FEMA was not part of that recovery, was not, and there were 1,700 homes, that's, I'm not trying to compare, everything's horrible. When, when my home flooded, there was only like, a couple dozen that flooded, and it was violating me. It sucked for me, it was only a couple dozen people that felt like I did, but I was one of them, that sucked. So I'm not trying to dismiss anybody's pain, it sucks what you're going through, I went through it, it's horrifying and horrible, okay? But, I'm just being realistic with you, okay? The last time I remember FEMA being involved was when Munster flooded, the highway was shut down for a week, there was millions and millions of dollars in damage, they were involved then. I'm not sure this qualifies. If it does, we'll, we'll apply, councilman, but, you know, after we apply then, who knows if it goes anywhere, but if we could apply, we will apply. My gut tells me, I don't know if we're going to meet that threshold, but if we do, we will, I promise you. I'm just trying to be, I'm not trying to dismiss anybody's pain, everybody's upset, I get it, but I'm just trying to be realistic, I really, just trying to be realistic, okay?
You know, of course, I've lived in the city my whole life, so 70 years, I've been a homeowner over 40, and I've never left my neighborhood. I've had floods, flooded basements twice in my first house, twice in my second house, and I have a backflow preventer, and I still had water come through the opening to clean the trap. But what, the calls that I'm receiving are that people like me, who have been around for decades, who have to keep cleaning their basements, don't want to do that anymore.
I agree.
And they're asking, "What do we do? What is the city's next steps in not having basements get water again?" So, I also understand that backflow preventers primarily do work, and that's a good thing. But I also was told that if you have a backflow preventer, that water will just go to the next house that doesn't have it.
That's true.
And go up and then...
That's true. If the whole council lived on the same block, and everybody had a backflow preventer, except for Councilman Rakos, in a flood event, you would all be dry, and Councilman Rakos would get the brunt. Agree. Which means, we should all be getting this, and, you know, don't be the last one. I mean, I guess that's what it means.
Well, I think people are asking, "What, what's next? And how do we reduce risk, and how do we afford that risk, to reduce that risk?" And I think they want to hear about a plan, about what are we going to do? And I invite you, sanitary, the council, that we start sitting and brainstorming this to see what else there is before everybody has a backflow preventer, is there anything else that can help? People, so, I'm not going to keep beating that one, I, people want to know, what are we going to do in the short term? The other thing is, I have a, a lot of immigrants in my neighborhood, primarily Spanish-speaking, and I don't think they have access to information about sanitary's program and dos and don'ts about how to not flood, and I think that perhaps in your, your thing that goes out every month with the water department, maybe information about water and the program might, you might put that in there as a suggestion, and maybe in Spanish too, so, so many of the residents in my neighborhood know what's available. Because I think there are people who just, I saw people cleaning, and I went up to them, and I gave them the flyer for the Tuesday meeting, but, you know, they spoke three words of English, and they were just battling the flood like everybody else, I just want, hope that there can be some consideration to get the message out to them about what we're doing too.
Yeah, I specifically will ask Marty, if, most of, almost everything we do is bilingual, so, we put it in both languages, so, I imagine they do the same in the sanitary district, I would hope so, and, you know, I'm willing to sit down and talk. You know, I feel horrible, obviously, I also know there's nothing that I could have done, there's nothing that the sanitary district could have done to prevent what happened, and it's, it's like a murder, when that happens too. I feel horrible as a mayor, I feel like, man, what could we have done different, and a lot of times, there's not anything, it's just, this is...
I under...
The storms are getting tougher, you know, I mean, we're blessed and cursed, we're blessed with a lot of water where we live, and we're cursed with too much water sometimes, and we can't control it. I go to other parts of the country where I have family living, and they have no water at all, and that's a curse also, and, I mean, I'm, I'm not making excuses, I wish there was something I could tell you, Mark, councilman, excuse me, where I said, "Councilman, we're going to do this deep tunnel in Hammond, and it's going to fix all of our problems." We would have, we have to have a place to put the water, and we used to put it in Lake Michigan, and we can't do that anymore. And our water go into the Hammond Sanitary District to build a plant, another Hammond Sanitary Plant, I mean, just if that's what we were thinking, like, bigger capacity, 70 million's not big enough, we want 140 million? I mean, realistically, that's a, I'm just spitballing, I mean, that's a six-figure project all, excuse me, a nine-figure project all day, like, a couple hundred million...
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I mean, then, then, then if you had the bigger plant, then you'd have to have the bigger infrastructure to handle the bigger storm load, which would be, I mean, I'm not making excuses, that's what I'm talking about, though, this is nothing we could fix in four years. This is, if we're like, if we're saying that we think that the infrastructure in our city, because, since you and I have been on the council, you, you took over at the same time I did, councilman, we've watched probably 15 to 20 million dollars a year going to our infrastructure, a lot of in the first district, that's just counting local money, that doesn't count any federal money, that doesn't count state money, and we've done a good job of rebuilding the infrastructure in the city, and yet, we're still flooding.
All the streets that got new work underground in my district in that area you talked about flooded over the curbs, they flooded over the curbs, so, having the new street for that storm didn't matter, having the new work underground, the new piping didn't make a difference.
Agreed. You did what you're supposed to do with the money, and it was completely submerged in water, and just quick calculations, North Hammond alone had 400 million gallons of water. There is no, I don't know how big the plants are in South Florida where they have hurricanes, I don't know how big they are there, but that's, I mean, you can't handle a water when it hits us like that. I know this after 20 years, because I get PTSD when we start getting heavy rain events like that, and heavy snow events. The fact is, when it hits us all at once, that's when we have the biggest problems, and it hits you all at once. When I say it hits you all at once, councilman, it hit North Hammond specifically all at once, Cal City and Dalton, but I'm not responsible for that. North Hammond got walloped. There's a heat map, I could pass it out to the council, I should have brought it, I apologize. The heat map is white where it's the worst, right across North Hammond, like, almost five inches of rain, which...
What I, what I was getting a lot were calls about, "I flooded, I lost things."
I know.
"I had to clean."
Mm-hmm.
"Then I have to buy a backflow preventer to prevent it again, and that's going to be some thousands."
Right.
"And then, when I sell my house, I have to list that it's, it had floods, so I may not get the amount that I was looking for, because now it's on the real estate application that my house flooded, even though it might have been five years ago or whatever."
Yeah, it's horrible.
So, people are just feeling dinged all over the place.
I get it.
I feel it for, I feel it, and, and I just want you to know that, that's what's coming up on the calls I get.
I agree with you, councilman. Believe me, we're getting it also, Hammond Sanitary District's getting it, I know you're getting it, and it's horrible. And when Councilman Berry's district, you win one neighborhood two times, and within the couple months, within the last couple months, Councilman Berry was getting, and I dare say, the councilmen that got lucky this time, we're probably going to be talking to you, it could be my house that's next, because my house is combined, just like North Hammond. My house doesn't have a backflow preventer, just like North Hammond, I got lucky this time. Last time I cleaned my basement, I, I didn't put anything nice down there, and to this day, it's not super, it's not ugly, but it's not like it was before, I never had the confidence. Not telling, and, I'm not sure how homeowners insurance works, I know when I had my situation, I contacted my homeowners insurance, and I learned that my homeowners insurance doesn't cover that, and that I could have bought a separate policy that I didn't buy unfortunately, that would have covered that, but I had, didn't have that. My regular homeowners did not, which was a surprise at the time.
Maybe some of the information people need to...
Right.
Because I think a lot of people got blindsided, thinking they had coverage.
With their homeowners? Right. I think any homeowners, well, I learned the hard way, just like we're learning right now, homeowners and renters insurance doesn't cover, you specifically have to have separate flood insurance for events like this, and that's not cheap. And I don't believe, because Councilman Mark, a lot of your district in Robertsdale used to have flood insurance from Wolf Lake, I don't even think that flood insurance would have covered a basement backup like this, that was if Wolf Lake flooded into there, so...
Does anybody, any other councilmen have any questions for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Hi, councilman.
Councilman Torres.
I, I agreed with Councilman Kowinski that some kind of board or committee ought to be formed to discuss this, because this weather for this climate change is not going to get better. There's a lot of people in, in my district that keep losing their appliances, their furnaces, their water heaters, and, and let's say they're able to replace it now, and next year it might be the same thing, we just cannot let this continue, there's got to be a way.
What are you suggesting?
Oh, I don't know, that's why, if you get idea, I got an idea.
What's that?
I'll, I'll tell you what it is, you know, I think problems started when, when we put a lot of, when we paved the alleys, for example, put asphalt, and water just has nowhere to go. Before, it seeped down into the ground, and the water was like a, I mean, the ground was like a retention pond, and if you go back to gravel alleys, and I know they're a pain to maintain and all that, but at least it gives water a place to flow down in the ground and retain, instead of going in people's houses, it goes down to the ground, that's one idea. More retention ponds if, around the, in different neighborhoods, like the one we got on Columbia Avenue. There's got to...
Those are coming in our future, councilman. We do part of our consent decree with, whoever has them.
And use some money, plan for some losses, like, like you have a rainy day fund, the city has a rainy day fund, plan for loss that we can compensate people, at least, I, I know sanitary director was telling us that he's trying to advance the overflow valve from 1,000 to maybe 2,000, but he's looking for the money. Maybe we can find money to at least help, help them. Like, it was mentioned, if somebody has a overflow valve and, and the other person doesn't, that's going to go, find a way to give that priority to give, get everybody an overflow, and put it on the side of the street, so that the government lets us pay for it instead of, and they're people's property. There's got to be ways, maybe if, if a board would form just to plan that, maybe some of my other ideas might pop up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilman. Anybody else?
Because we have a new normal, this is our new normal.
It is, I agree, councilman.
The 100-year rain is not the 100-year rain.
I agree, councilman.
It's, it's the, the new normal is torrential rain.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have to come up with something new to, to match this, if, whatever that looks like, none of us really have a clue right now, why we're willing to talk some more about it.
Mr. President?
Yes, councilman.
Mayor, I, I just want to thank you for acknowledging the fact that, you know, the third district has dealt with this several times, I think just within the past three years dating back to...
The previous two incidents were in your district council.
Yeah, the previous three, if you want to go back to May of 2023, or 2020 as well, because that was, I don't know how big that was compared to these last two, but that was the first one I experienced in this position, and I know that we've had, I've had several conversations with Dean, with Marty, with Jack, just trying to figure out, like, we're talking about now, like, possible solutions, and I know a lot of them cost a lot more money than what we have now, but it sounds like in areas where there is a separation between the two systems that they either don't flood or flood less, so I don't know if we want to kind of sit down and, and take a look at what it will cost us to separate the ones that aren't separated, and map that out for, I don't know, 20, 30 years, however long it'll take, but at least to, what my counterparts are saying, have...
Counsel, I, I'm not trying to interrupt you, I think your idea is great, in fact, I know that idea is addressed in the consent decree, which, as a reminder to all you, has to be met within, I think, 13 or 14 years, that we have to spend a significant amount of money through the Hammond Sanitary District to satisfy the US EPA, that we won't have such events as the one we just did, so...
Okay.
So, very wise, I appreciate what you're saying, and, and I know that's being addressed, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
The other thing I just wanted to question is, is, I know that the mayor in Cal City issued a state of emergency, and I know that you're in the process of researching FEMA and what support we might be able to get from them. What would you declaring a state of emergency do in that process? Would it help bring FEMA in, would it help bring notice to...
It would have to be declared by the governor for us to bring FEMA in.
Right, but I'm saying, you could still declare a state of emergency locally, and then maybe that might trigger the governor to act.
Sure. These are questions. I think there's, you know, we have to define what an emergency is, you know, and because we want to make sure that-
Please, everybody, use the quorum here.
We have a lot of events that take place in the city, and we will, over the next ten years, we'll have a lot of events. And if we're constantly going to the governor's office, making the governor make a tough decision. Nobody appreciates having to make the decision, okay? Nobody appreciates. If I approach the governor and say, "Governor, Governor, we have an emergency in Hammond," and the governor says, "No, Mayor, you don't." Nobody appreciates being put on the spot like that, okay? So we have to be, this really doesn't help when people mock you. And I'm trying to have a conversation-
Excuse me, excuse me, if people don't know how to behave in a public meeting.
I mean, one of the worst things I think we can do in Hammond is be afraid to talk. I'm having a conversation with the council right now. And I'm trying to be honest and express, this is a horrible situation. Nobody caused, nobody up here caused this problem. This is a horrible situation. I feel horrible for you, as do the members of the council. We're having a conversation, trying to have it, and we're better than that in Hammond. I thought we were. We're just trying to discuss this. This isn't Tom McDermott's fault. This isn't Councilman Kowinski's fault. This isn't anybody's fault. This is, like the councilman said, this is the new normal. We're gonna have, once a year, you know, once a century storms, more frequently than we're used to. And North Hammond got it. Just like the previous three, we're in the third district. Just like the previous couple before that, we're in the fifth and assist district. Now, the question is, are we gonna completely reinvest in our sanitary district, make it twice as big and twice as efficient? And we're talking, not just big money, we're talking massive amounts of money. Like, let's be honest, we're talking big, big, big money. And we still have the consent decree and everything to hit with the federal government. That's the kind of stuff we're talking about. Maybe that's what people have to start doing now. I don't know. You know, you go west and everybody's burning down. They'd be begging for water. We come out here, we're drowning. This is all related to one thing. I believe it's climate change, but who am I? I'm no expert. I'm just a dumb mayor. But I think it's related to climate change, but I'm a jerk off if I say that, right? This is a hard thing we're dealing with, and we're trying to do it the right way. And I feel sorry for everybody that's going through this. And your local government cares. And we're getting screamed at and called jerks and assholes all day long, like we did. So you turn on the pumps! That doesn't help. The pumps were on. Everything was working. Everybody was working. Everything worked as it was supposed to that day. Everything did. And it doesn't help when you get called names. It doesn't help when you get ridiculed in public. It doesn't. I appreciate the questions from the council. I do. I think this helps. We're trying to be honest in front of our constituents when something horrible happened. There's no explanation for it. You didn't fail, Councilman Mark. Neither did I. I think you were really nice to go out there and talk to people when they're devastated. That takes courage.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
You talk about 2020. We got it three times in the fifth district. When the snow melted, then we got that horrible rain in May and in June. After the June event, I talked to Jack Smith, and I said, "Jack, everybody keeps telling me about these gates. Can you show me the system?" On the Saturday after the event, he took me and showed me every step of the way. And what he explained to me is, when you got these big main sewers, when they fill up, and they start flowing towards the plant because they're gravity-filled, it acts like a railroad gate, more or less, to the side street pillars because the water's flowing so fast through them big sewers, the street's not gonna release until the main sewers clear out. I'm not making excuses as far as what can we do as a city. Mayor and his council knows, in 2020, after that main event, when I had a project going up for lights in the fifth district, and we had that flood, and I went over to different districts and saw people's water heaters and furniture floating down the street, I said, "We gotta do something different as a council." And we did create the capital improvement board there where we can take on these bigger projects. So it's not like we're just some magic wands waving and gates are opening and closing at, you know, somebody's request or leisure. We are trying to take steps. And I agree. I've been in knee-deep water, not only in my residence basement, but that one in 2020, I was up twenty-four hours. Mr. Button was out there in the flood. And I got home twenty-four hours later, and I had eight inches of water in my basement. And I think it sat there three days because that was the third one that year. And I get what, I totally understand when you say it was a system failure. I understand it. That's all I got to say.
It wasn't a failure, though. No, all due respect. It was a complete massive overload of the system. The system was trying to do what it was supposed to, and it just got completely clogged with water. There was water on top of water on top of water. There was no place, there wasn't a, when you see the manhole covers blow off, the system is filled. It's filled and pressurized so high that it takes these manhole covers away almost a hundred pounds and throws it eight feet in the air. That's pressure. That's a completely saturated full system. That's what happened. Then our guys have to go out there and pick up the manhole covers and put them back on when everything calms down.
I think that all these events across the city just reaffirm that we just have to look at the new normal, and is there anything else we can do?
Yes, sir.
And then come up with that and let people know if there is something.
You know, and I appreciate that, Councilman Mark. And I'm willing to sit down with the council anytime and talk about this. I just, I'm the guy at the end of the day that calculates the bottom line number, and I'm always the guy that gets beat up because I'm the one that comes back. But everything we do comes back to the bottom line, and it's massive amount of money. And that's fine. Maybe we start biting it in small chunks. But I, and I would like to say, I know there's a number of councilpeople that sit on the capital improvement board, and you deal with these types of problems every little meeting. And I appreciate the work you do with the engineer, trying to get these citywide projects done that'll help us with this kind of project, this kind of problem. And that's why we did put that together. And I appreciate Warple for bringing that up.
Mr. President, the only other point that I wanted to make, Mayor, was that I think Councilman Warple alluded to this, but it's not like your administration is not having these conversations or not exploring what we can do to prevent this from happening. So I know that I've said in numerous meetings with Marty, with Jack, with Dean, kind of ironing out the possibilities of what we could do. And to your point, I know it will cost a ton of money to make any improvements. And I think that's why we've been saying that the backflow preventer program is the most feasible right now, because we do have money set aside to help residents pay for that. And I know from HSD standpoint, there haven't been a lot of residents who have taken advantage of it.
Including the mayor.
And so you all are working-
Do you know if you have one in your house?
I don't, but I, my basement is waterproof. The only water I get is from if my sump pump malfunctions, which it has because of one of these major storms. But, so, and I know that the HSD is exploring, along with Owana and community development, exploring ways to expand that program and make it even more feasible for more residents to obtain that. So I just want to thank you for that, because I know that it's coming, and hopefully residents will take advantage of it. And I'll do whatever I can to assist from a gaming fund standpoint or just kind of getting the word out to.
Thanks, councilman.
Anybody else?
Again, could I say one more thing before we leave?
Sure.
First, I appreciate the council for the, and I'm really sorry to all the residents who are affected by this. You know, it's a horrifying thing that you're going through. I've gone through it. It sounds like it was a lot worse. What I went through wasn't, you know, it didn't ruin my water heater and my furnace and stuff like that. That's devastating. So my heart goes out to you. I think that Councilman Mark's suggestion for putting together some type of information packet from the city that could give people the ability to defend themselves in the future better, maybe it's time for us to take out these flood insurance policies. Maybe it's time, you know. Like I said, when my basement flooded, I didn't put the money back into it that I had before. And I put a lot of money into it, and I felt like I wasted my money. And I know how you feel. I'm really sorry. And, you know, I wish this was an easy solution. I wish we could just say, yep, we'll fix this. Next year, it'll be all better. I wish I could say that. But this is very, very tough, complex, and it's out of our control in a lot of ways. So I apologize. But I love North Hammond. You guys are beautiful. It's a beautiful part of the city. We believe in it. We're investing in it. And I know you feel like, you know, everybody's against you, but I want you to know everybody's thinking about you. And members of our own administration, members of the engineering department were among the four hundred and sixty-seven people that lost their basement. So it affected our team just like it affected you. So I apologize to everybody. And I want you to know, we'll do everything we can to prevent this in the future. So thank you. If there's no other questions.
Mr. President?
Yes, councilman.
Just one quick question, Mayor. The Whiting retention area, is that also being utilized?
The what?
The Whiting retention area, is that also being utilized?
I imagine Whiting uses it for their own storage.
Okay.
Yeah. But our storage basin is, so we don't just put it in there and just hold it. We use it, we flow water through it, councilwoman. So I've learned this in time. So when, I mentioned a stat to you earlier that says the CSO basin was discharging at a rate of four hundred and sixty-eight million gallons a day. That is so much bigger than our plant. And the reason we're able to do so much water is when we're overwhelmed, like we were in the plant, you could only clean so much. And the basin was full. So they flow the water through the basin, and it just sort of, the bad stuff sort of collects. And this is gross, okay? But the bad stuff collects, and the water flows through. And by the time it makes it through that maze and makes its way into the river, it's cleaner than in the old days. Way cleaner than the old days. Not clean, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't go swimming in it, okay? But it's cleaner, and that's satisfactory to the EPA. So when we're overwhelmed like we were, that's what we do. And that's what we were doing. That's why that four hundred and sixty-eight million gallons, ten years ago, that's in our basements. It would have been a much bigger problem. I'm not clapping anybody on the back either, because we failed, okay? But four hundred and sixty-eight million gallons, we got rid of that day, and that water had to go someplace. So, but that's a great question. That CSO basin is a huge part of our defense. And Councilman Torres brought something up earlier, that in the future, you're going to see more of these detention basins in different parts of the city, including down south and strategic parts of the city. That's part of our plan with the federal government, councilman. So, but these are real good questions. And this is part of the strategy that HSD is working with the EPA on.
One more thing.
Sure.
Just want to give kudos out to our sanitary and our public works because they were out working that day. So we want to just thank them for that. But if you can also just keep us up to date on any applications or anything, that would be great.
Sure. No, I'll have a report by the next meeting about the update. Okay? Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes, councilman.
Mayor, I don't think anybody's blaming you personally for an act of nature. It's just that frustration everybody has. And there are no way to, you know, come up with ideas. But I think you, as major, as a mayor, people, and us as a council, people expect us to come up with ideas and solutions to prepare for the future. Not much we can do about what happened. But weather's not gonna change, and it's predicted to be unpredictable like it is. So it's gonna keep on happening. So we gotta come up with something.
I agree, councilman. One of the things I've learned about being mayor is one of my jobs is to get yelled at. And I'm not being funny when I say that. When something like this happens, sometimes you want somebody to just get pissed off at and take your frustrations. And that's part of my job. It sucks. It's a crappy part of my job, but it is. And it's not just when it floods. When it snows, when somebody gets killed, when somebody messes up, that's my job is to take the heat. And I feel the heat. And when I can't feel the heat, that's when I need to stop doing this job. But as soon as this happened, I knew it was trouble. As soon as this happened, I felt devastated. And that's what, that's part of my job is to feel the heat. I knew that we were in trouble. And part of your, my job is to get yelled at. That's part of your job as mayor. And I know you guys get yelled at too. People get frustrated, and who, they take it out on. They take it on their local government official. Nobody made me be mayor. I ran for it. So I'm not apologizing. I mean, I wasn't trying to be offensive or anything, councilman, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. Nice talking to you.
As we proceed, just to remind everybody, all cell phones should be either off or turned on silent. I can make phone calls in here. Let's try to maintain decorum in a public setting. But we'll go on with our meeting. Next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the minutes from September eleventh, 2023, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move to approve the claims, beginning with claims dated September eleventh, 2023, and ending with claims dated September twentieth, 2023. Claim number sixty-three seventy-three through claim number sixty-eight fifty, inclusive, in the amount of five million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. I so move.
Second.
And a motion is second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Claims passes nine zero. Next up, public hearings. We have none. Communications.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski.
I received notice that the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will hold its monthly meeting tomorrow at the Hammond Mohawks, which is located at one hundred forty-first and Calumet Avenue. Start time for the meeting is six thirty, and sanitary district manager, Marty Wheelghost, will be the featured speaker at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a couple. I just want to go on record and thank Amy Radelac and Home Depot. So back in 2020, they donated three hot water heaters after that May twenty-whatever storm. And we were able to get two of those installed in the homes of residents at no cost to the residents back in 2020. Well, I had one left over. And so after the events of July fifth, we were able to get that installed. So I want to thank them for that donation. I'm working on trying to secure more. So if we have residents that are still without hot water heaters, please reach out and let me know. Also want to give my prayers and condolences to the family of Mr. Jerry Jarrett, who passed away last week. And his funeral is on Wednesday in East Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? I have one. HC3 is holding their fall community cleanup on October fourteenth at nine AM to noon. Everybody will meet at the Hanson Community Center, which is, used to be the Hanson Library. It's October fourteenth at nine AM. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Thank you. As always, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. The East Hammond-Poleman Crime Watch will meet on Tuesday, October seventeenth, six PM, at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, October fourth, six thirty PM, at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, October third, six PM, at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October nineteenth. Is that the nineteenth? I can't read my writing. It is? Okay, thank you. Thursday, October nineteenth, six PM, and that is at the Jean Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October sixth, nine thirty AM, at Irving School. This is a bilingual program. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, October twelfth, seven PM, at Trinity Lutheran Church. That's on the corner of Holman and one hundred and seventy-third. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October twelfth, six thirty PM, at Calumet College. And starting up again, Golden Manor Community Watch will meet Friday, October sixth, one thirty PM, at Golden Manor Senior Building. It's nice to have such a large crowd here today, so I can express to you the importance of showing up to a crime watch meeting to find out- to you the importance of showing up to a crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood. Information that you heard tonight would not likely be expressed at a crime watch meeting, but there is other information that you can find out at a crime watch meeting. As a matter of fact, in November, Edison Community Watch is going to have, from BMO Harris, a fraud specialist to talk about how you can protect your checking account, your debit card, and things of that nature. So you can get a lot of good information at these meetings. You can also find out how to protect yourself and your family and your property in your neighborhood, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
The Capital Improvements Board met on September 18, and I grabbed the wrong folder, so I'll have to report on it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We appropriated two things, but I can't remember what they were. I took notes, but I grabbed the wrong folder at home. I'll report on both meetings at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Number 10, introduction of ordinances.
2319, in ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2023 Gaming Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2319, refer to council as a whole with a, we don't have anything else. Oh, yeah, we do that night. And we'll have a committee meeting at 5:15 on October 10 with a public hearing that evening. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Yes, this is appropriating gaming dollars from 2022 park improvements from all six districts and the Capitol Improvement Board. That will be appropriated to 2023 park improvements in each of the districts and the Capitol Improvement Board.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It seems to me that there was a typographical error here on the, on the first page of the ordinance. There's a box that shows how it should be appropriated. But I think that should not be there. It should be after, therefore be it ordained by the common council, because there's just a blank there. So I think at some point in the proceedings, that should be straightened out.
Is that something that can be amended at the next meeting when it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. First and second reading of 2319 is passes 9-0. That's the only introduction of ordinances. Next up is resolutions.
Resolution 23R-07, a resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving and entering into a joint interlocal cooperation agreement with Lake County, Indiana regarding the construction of a new fire station.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Make a motion for passage of 23R-07?
Second.
Motion is second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted, I know what we can do about it, but there's apparently an error where they, instead of having the clerk sign it as a clerk, it says clerk and treasurer. We do not have a clerk and treasurer here.
Mr. President.
And I imagine if he's like, he'll just sign this as clerk. But I, you know, that error appears several times, and since it's gone through so many other bodies, it might not be worth it to try to clean that up. But I just wanted to call the attention of the council to that problem.
Thank you, Attorney Berger. We did discuss that in chambers beforehand. Councilman Warple?
Mr. President, that is, this is a resolution, that is a mirror resolution that the county council passed. Whereas, the city of Hammond will receive $2.1 million per the joint interlocal cooperation agreement between Hammond and Lake County, and specifically, Councilman Hamm, the county councilman is donating $1.4 million. And Councilwoman said is donating, not donating, transferring $700,000 to Hammond for a total of $2.1 million for construction of a new fire station. And it's a mirror image of the resolution they passed. And apparently, in the resolution they passed, we have an attachment that's not part of our original resolution. And it does say the part about clerk treasurer in Hammond. So I'll make a motion, I don't know if we can amend something that they passed, but I'll make a motion that we amend that to say, the clerk of the city of Hammond, no, the treasurer, I'm sorry, the controller of the city of Hammond. I make a motion, we amend out clerk treasurer and put in
Controller.
Controller, yeah, there it had.
Second.
And what line did you say that was in, Attorney Berger?
Page three.
Page three.
On page three?
Item B.
Item B. The clerk treasurer of the city of Hammond of Lake County is hereby designated to receive, disburse, and account for all funds pursuant to this agreement. I would like to amend out clerk treasurer of the city of Hammond and put in the controller of the city of Hammond. I so move.
And I believe I second it.
And then on the last page, where they sign, where all the signatures are under Clerk Golick's name, it says clerk treasurer, I make a motion that we amend out the word treasurer.
Okay.
I so move. Those two amendments.
All right. My question is, do we have the ability or the right to amend?
Councilman Hamm is shaking his head. Yeah, and that's what they passed.
We can amend our county.
Ask Berger.
Yes.
Ask our attorney.
Okay, Councilman Hamm from Lake County, could you please come up?
I've never had so much trouble giving money away before at all. Yes, absolutely. The attachment was just there for your reference. What we're trying to do is assist at the mayor's request in helping in the construction of the fire station up there by Wolf Lake. Council lady said, myself have agreed. But the amendments that Councilman Warple have offered will satisfy, should satisfy everything. I don't believe that Attorney Berger would even protest that. But Dave's amendments would cover it.
You got them coming.
This is done quite often in county. I just happen to give all of mine to Hammond. Council lady said gave half, because she had some other, but you have to understand throughout the county, with the 17 communities, there are clerk treasurers all over.
Right.
In all of these towns. We only have a few cities, so that's probably the reason. But it was just an attachment. All you have to do is follow Councilman Warple's amendments, and you'll be in good shape. And they'll send our lovely controller $2.1 million.
I think that would be a really good thing.
I think it'd be wonderful.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote on the amendments.
And I did second.
Okay, call for a vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. The amendment for 23R-7 is passed 9-0. Now for the resolution. Do we have a motion to?
I make a motion, we, I think we already made it.
Passed the resolution.
I make a motion that we pass 23R-17 as amendment.
Second.
Motion is second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion?
It's 07.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I said 2317. It's 23R-07.
23R-7, yes. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 23R-7 as amended, has been passed 9-0. Next up, new and unfinished business. Councilman Warple.
Just since we have so many people here, we did change next month's first meeting from 9th, is it?
Yes.
To the 10th, because of Columbus Day, so instead of our regular night on Monday night, it'll be Tuesday night at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Hammond Fire Department open house is October 7th. October 7th.
Station 8.
Station 8 on Parrish, just north of 165th. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. All right. We have quite a few people here that signed in for public expression. And everybody gave their address, too. I'm very, I'm very good. So when you come up, I will call your name. We ask you confirm your name and address. You'll be given three minutes. You got a timer here. And they'll be, you'll have a chance to give your public expression tonight. First up, Bob Nelson.
Bob Nelson, 4049 Grover, Hammond, Indiana. First of all, good evening, council members. I'd like to thank you for your service. I'm in the 1st District by the Pulaski Park Neighborhood. And I would like to thank Councilman Kowinski for the wonderful job he does. I read his column all the time in the paper. I've heard what everyone has to say, and I really can't add anything to that. I'm not, not smarter than anybody else that's up here. And I do want to say, I did lose my hot water heater. I did lose my furnace. My basement's a mess. I'm trying to carry all that stuff out. On a fixed income, I have been able to replace the hot water heater. But fortunately, we have some nice weather, and I guess I can delay the furnace for a little while. But I just wanted to express the pain that me and my neighbors, our whole block flooded out. It was just horrid. And I don't know what can be done, if there can be any diversion of funds to help us out, if not with a sort of, some sort of a gift, a low-cost loan, maybe, something that could help us. And I would like to ask Councilman Tyler, apparently he had some problems in his district. And I was wondering what the city of Hammond was able to do for your district at that time, and if something similar to that could be done for the 1st District. Thank you. I'll listen for your answer.
Thank you. Next up, Dolina Swiers?
I was actually, uh...
No, we don't, we don't answer questions. This is just public expression. After the meeting, you might be able to talk to the councilman.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Donna Swiers, 4040 Grover Avenue. Couple things. Waterproofing, I had my house waterproofed. It doesn't make a difference. The check valve thing is a great thing. It's a great idea. But once you've spent thousands of dollars replacing everything, who's going to help pay for it? Thirdly, is the check valve going to stop raw sewage from coming in your house? Because I had three feet. Three feet. And remediation places want to cost, charge me $8,000 to $10,000 to clean it up. I'm doing it myself. Myself. I lost everything. Things can be replaced. I keep my pets down there. If I wasn't home, they would have died. It was three feet of sewage. I have human waste in my basement. Human waste. What's going to be done about it? I didn't see you at all. Did you come down Grover? I was home all week, because I didn't go to work. I couldn't go to work. Because I'm waiting for adjusters to come to look at it. I'm waiting for the city to come and look at it. Nobody's helping. I called the city. They were parked in front of my house. I went and I talked to them. I said, oh, you're not on my thing. You're not on my, I don't have paperwork on you. I said, well, someone called me back. He said, that's okay. You're on the list. Then I get a call from the township, saying, hey, we have a $50 gift certificate for you, so you can get cleaning supplies at Strax. You can keep it. $50 isn't going to buy anything. Nothing. I had to burn a whole week of vacation. I have no water heater. I have no furnace. I have, I lost everything. And I, and now I'm tearing walls down. And I'm still waiting for remediation to come and help me. But they're not, I'm not going to have them do it. I'm going to do it myself. I'm tired of waiting. I had to go back to work. My house is a mess. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, George Stoya. I'm sorry, TJ Werdig.
Hi there. TJ, 52 Locust Street. Flooding has plagued Hammond for a long time. Hammond's sewer system is overwhelmed, as is, and it becomes more and more stressed the more pavement we put down, like Councilman Torres mentioned. And it's not just alleys. The more green space we replace with development, the less water will be able to infiltrate into the ground through that green space. And the more water will be channeled along that new pavement into the sewers. The city has chosen to remove an environmental center and build a brand-new fire station next door to an existing fire station. The city is planning to level Briar East Woods in Hessville and build another bridge. The city has chosen to replace the Clark baseball fields to build, of all things, a subdivision. Where are your priorities? Instead of building new subdivisions for new residents, invest in your current residents. Instead of building a bridge, preserve the existing green spaces that provide the best defense against flooding. Ken has been talking about this for years and warning you about this for years. And you go full steam ahead with all this new development, and it's making flooding worse. And your choices are harming your residents. That's all.
Thank you. Next up, George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. I tracked that lawsuit by the Hammond Sanitary District. I don't know what year it was, 2014, 2013, maybe even 2015. Can't remember anymore. Yeah, it had to be 2015, somewhere about. And part of the damages sought by the sanitary district was monies from the city of Whiting, Griffith, and Highland for, to fund for, to fund the construction of a larger retention basin. And I recall vividly, and I recall, and it's in my memory, and I hope, I'm pretty sure it's still there, and you guys should look into it. That Whiting counter claims, so to speak, that, hey, we have access to retention capacity. And not only that, it didn't rain as much, according to the mayor, in the way up north, in the first district there in Robertsdale. So you guys ought to look into that. They've got an enormous retention basin there, I know that. So, and I don't think they're fully utilizing it. And it's someplace to dump water. I mean, that was the whole, the whole thing was that the EPA was coming down on the city because it, its ability, it didn't have enough retention capacity, if I remember correctly. But that was an issue. But somebody ought to look into it.
Thank you, George. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. What has never been mentioned in the discussion with the mayor and so on was overdevelopment. Nobody wants to talk about it. Everybody wants to talk about backflows and all this other stuff, which is not really going to help our situation. When it comes to sustainable development, you're going the wrong way. It's full steam ahead with your development, and you don't care. Nobody's talking about it. About a year ago, I talked about the increased flooding by paving over the Briar East Dune Woodlands, our giant sponge. We discussed the twenty twenty flood that pointed out that our powder town is over the edge when it comes to flooding. You were shown video evidence that the south side of Hessville is flooding the north side of Hessville. The south side of Hessville, for all its new development, filled up and spilled over to the north side of Hessville, dramatically flooding it with three feet of water in the streets. The south side got water in basements, but it was nothing compared to the north side of Hessville. Check it out, councilman. Check it out. Don't just listen to stories, talk to the people in the streets. If you recall, we also talked about the future. How Purdue University did a study predicting a seventeen percent increase in the amount of heavy rain events in our area by twenty fifty. Do you think that is too far off for us to concern ourselves with? Not our problem? Do we just let our kids deal with it when they grow up? That's what's going on. Within the past two months, we have had two flooding events, the last one being over four inches. Here's a question. How much rain can our system actually take? No one seems to know. Two inches an hour, four inches in four hours, I don't know if anyone knows. Yet it's still full steam ahead on these projects that you guys are doing. Pave over everything. Some people think backflow preventers are the answer. Just remember, every time someone installs a backflow, means other people without one get more flooding and more water goes in their homes. The most common, it is also the most common valve to fail. The water has got to go somewhere. If all the homes in the new development got them, what happens to the neighborhood next door? They get more flooding. When you, when a new three hundred thousand square foot building comes along with its one hundred thousand square foot parking comes online, where does that water go? The new homes and the buildings are high and dry, while those who can afford at least get more flooding. Ain't that always the case? Those who can afford at least are affected the most. That's going on in Hammond right now. The have and have-nots. The water has got to go somewhere. Continued development incentivizes areas that are prone to flooding will only exacerbate the problem.
Thank you, Ken.
You're going the wrong way.
Next up, Carolyn Marsh.
Carolyn Marsh, eighteen oh four Oliver Street in Whiting. I'm here as a moderator of the Swan Facebook, Save Whiting and Neighbors. I have been at the Clark Field, where the firehouse is being built and the subdivision is being built. There's been a huge issue of draining Clark Field, which has a very high water table, apparently. It was being drained through hoses into a wetland. That was stopped Monday. They started draining it on a Thursday. The following Monday, it was stopped by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. There has been no press on this. What the mayor didn't mention, he says everything worked fine. No, nothing worked fine because a water main broke in Clark Field. I was out there. I talked to the water department. I saw the geyser spewing out of the water main in Clark Field. Nobody knew how to shut it off. They didn't have the shut offs. They didn't know if it was the small main or the large, large main. And it was the large one. And it's still spewing now. As of yesterday, I was out there. It's contained, but the water is flowing. There's still hoses going into the main sewer on Calumet Avenue, across from the pavilion. That's going into North Hammond. You can't tell me it's not. The water is flooded, the entire Clark Field, because the water table is so high. People are building in a wetland. If you want to take control of this situation, don't move the fire station. Add on to it. That's what we've always said. There's, makes no sense to move it down the street. And spend, and borrow money from Lake County residents to do it. That's outrageous. What we need to do is stop the overdevelopment. Thirty-seven lots going in a field that absorb the water. These people are building in a wetland. Where is that water go when it hits the roofs? And it's coming down the gutters? What, it's going into the sewer. You're going to continually get flooded. Stop the subdivision. Don't move the fire station and save Briar East Woods. To take down a woods in this day and age doesn't make any sense. Do the, do the underpass. It's outrageous what is going on. There is no news of the water main. Well, there was news after the fact on Monday. I don't know if the mayor was playing volleyball or what, but he was not, you couldn't find him on Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next up, Louis Boranegra.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Next up, Louis Boranegra, Boranegra? I'm not sure I'm saying that right. Boranegra, six forty, six, one forty-first? Might have left. Arturo Martinez.
Arturo Martinez, thirty-nine, twenty-eight toll. I also, myself, I'm in the same situation as that lady, where thirty-two inches of water, human feces everywhere, no washing machine, no dryer, refrigerator, no stove. The city came over and they told us that there was human error, they needed to turn on the pumps. That's why I think everybody in here is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Hill.
Dorothy Hill, eight twenty-seven Bow Street. Yes, we did get water in the third district on Bow Street. And I will, another complaint about the noise from the football field. We can hear that on my, I can hear that at my house when I'm in, which is the inside. So they need to load it, you know, cut the noise out a little bit. And we need to do something about these floods because we is getting them.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Next up, Genoviva Italiano? Atalano? Sorry.
Hi, my name is Genovita Atalano. I live at forty-three fourteen Cameron, and I've been in the residence for twenty-three years. And it's every year that I get water in my basement. And when does it stop to be the norm? Twenty-three years is a long time to be dealing with this problem, year after year after year. How many times do I have to replace my furnace, my boiler? It's trying, why, why does it have to be the norm? I want peace of mind. Why do I have to plan my vacations around the weather? Why do I have to be at work when it rains? Then I have to worry if the water is going to run in my basement? I want peace of mind. This needs to be fixed. Twenty-three years is too long to be the norm. And that's why you guys keep telling us, you got to deal with it, you got to do it. No, we don't have to deal with it. You got to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Diaz.
Hello, councilmen. Anthony Diaz, fifty-seven nineteen Holman Avenue, West Hammond, Alderman. I, they ask me for a lot of answers. Questions come to me, and I try to deal with it when it comes in. Of course, I don't get paid or anything, but I'm on Holman Avenue and I see a lot of activity going on there. My Harrison Park, we finally got water in that lagoon. I've been complaining for years. It's been dry because the pumps have been out for seven years, something like that. There's always a plan. So people say there's going to be some kind of big plan there. But again, we're not asking for the shiny new thing that's in North Hammond, the pavilion, or nothing, anything. I just want this guy, our mayor and then council to, to put it back where you found it. It was a great park, was thriving at one time. We used to have community programs there on the stage. Now we get the bums. We used to have Fourth of July things going on there. Nothing's happened anymore. You took the community away. Well, someone did, to bring it up north and take the community out of Harrison Park area and to make all these sportplex stuff, the cube, the pay-to-play. It's not how I grew up. We grew up to love the park and fishing tournaments and all that. But again, that's, that's in the past. And again, just do want to report that we do have water finally at Harrison Park Lagoon. Traffic update, Holman Avenue, the bridge is open. You can go down to Sibley, across the bridge on Holman. And then finally, the, the Michigan Avenue extension going into Holman, west of Holman, that is open too. The only one that's closed right now is Soul going into Johnson. That's a causeway that they made there. That's all shut down. So try to use Holman Avenue if you can to alleviate the problems. I tried to take my wife out Friday, but after going grocery shopping and coming home, she was in no mood to go out and see beautiful Hammond. One thing I want to say right now for the veterans, our property taxes on the veterans seem to have gone up. I don't know if there's a cap on that or something. We addressed that earlier in the year. But again, that's something my constituents want me to bring up. With the flood, I, I know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I do, Cal City does have a response team already set up. I know we don't have anything going on with FEMA. And I know my mayor, I said, be very, very, very nice. So you can't push the governor to do anything for us. Well, you know what? They work for us, all of us. And if we don't push and get any, any effort downstate, you know, they're going to think we're ignorant people, just like they think right now. You know, we don't have good representation here in Northwest Indiana to go down there in a, in a governor's ear, I guess. I don't know. But it's our job to push. I hate to hear the stories of these people talking about losing their memories. That's what I, my whole business is to preserve history, preserve memories. My basement right now is currently stacked with films, local history. If that would have got flooded, I don't know what I would do. I'm a god. I could, I couldn't believe it. I couldn't imagine this is a city archives and they're going to be flooded. But just thank you. And again, we have a, another meeting at the Mohawks tomorrow, Tuesday, six thirty. Be there tomorrow night. And then also.
Thank you.
Oakdale Cemetery tour for the Hammond Historic Society is Sunday. Be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Crystal Edmund.
Good evening, everyone. I live at fifty-eight twenty-two Erie Avenue. I'm here, we did get water. I got water up to the, the first stairs. Sadly, I was at church and I came home to find that. That's one of the, so we did get a lot of water on Erie Avenue. Our sewer system had not been changed. They told us, been telling us for years they was going to change it, but for years they were saying they wasn't going to change it because the school city was going to buy it. So we've been having a lot of problems in that area for a long time. It seemed like no one wants to address it. But also, here also about the noise from the football field. Sunday, they rented out the football field to Calumet City, Illinois' Pop Warner team. From eight thirty to after six, we was bombarded with noise to where we could not even stay in our own home. Even across the street, I live ten feet from the field. Even across the street, they couldn't believe it either, closing their door. The noise was really bad. We called the police. The police came out mainly because they made the alley a two-way parking lot. We could not even pull out our yard. So the police came and tried to clear that. But at the same time, if they would continue, I don't have a fenced-in yard. I have an open lock nest to me, which belongs. They was driving in the lock and using it to make U-turns. So it was a blatant disrespect not only of our property, but taking away our peace. And really, that's one of the one days that we might have to enjoy. It might be on Sunday because we are bombarded with noise Monday through Saturday. When the kids get out of school from three PM to five PM, maybe football practice from seven PM, five PM to seven, maybe soccer. If not, from five PM to seven, a game, from seven PM to nine, a game. I don't know. That's why I talked with Barry earlier. We was never informed when they built that football field that it was going to be there. We tried to call city. The city told me it was a school city project to get in touch with Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller did not answer his phone or return our calls until it was complete. So that's another issue. The other issue is when they all came down with the curves and the sidewalk, it's supposed to have been fenced in it, it made things worse. You patched it up, and by my house, you patched it up. And then right now, on the sidewalk that you didn't get, that they didn't do, now they're just hose water because you was patching it up. So Barry, we wanted to know, can you come and see our concerns? And so we can also address it with the engineer or whoever, because they made it. And some people say from sugar or whatever. That's what happened. It really looks bad. I'll call the street patches now. And that's what I'm going to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmund. James Edmund. He left? Okay, thank you. Ed Waters.
Good evening. My name is Ed Waters. I reside at fifty-eight forty-two Erie Avenue here in Hammond, Indiana. I'm here to expose the big lie. The big lie with the mayor, our councilman, school board. I've been a longtime resident of Hammond since nineteen ninety-one. I moved my family here from Colorado. I was actually born in the area, but we moved back into the area. My wife and I found this little home where we live at right now and still reside. My concern is overall how the third district is ran and being operated, and it has been since I've been a resident here. It's, it seemed to be always a shortage or nothing being done. We were told back in the early nineties, the school, or sort of late nineties rather, that the school was coming in. Well, it finally did, and boy, did it come in. I had already been previous, you know, a resident, I lived right next door to Hammond High School. But now with the new school, you can, you combine three schools into one, which my troubles went out the roof, as my neighbor just stated. When Hammond Central first opened in twenty-one, I don't know how to express to you guys. You guys probably don't, not even aware, or maybe don't even care. Because it seems like nobody is looking after our well-concern. I first met Barry when he was running for office. He went door to door with his lovely wives. Lovely wife shaking hands and handing out cigars and kissing babies, and that's about it. If you would have, if you would have walked down our street with your eyes closed at any given time, you'd have failed four times before you reached the end of the street because no sidewalks, cracked sidewalks. The street is horrific. I don't think nobody really cares. I think the city and our council, and I'm not trying to be personal, but to me, after Sunday, it seems like you're trying to get us to move. Is that it? Because, wow. I try to be a conscientious citizen. My property, my neighbor's property, I take great pride in, in my neighborhood. But the city has to do its job. It's, it's a travesty. Nobody's neighborhood, I bet, lives in, looks like the 57 and the 5800 block of Erie Avenue. It's a total wasteland. There's no sidewalks. Well, Barry, he did come and he did somewhat of a, patch him up. It was no better than our previous councilperson, whose name I won't mention, but we all know who he is. So... Thank you very much. I'll be at the next council meeting.
Oscar Palacios?
My name is Oscar Palacios. I live in 4117 Tow Avenue. And I was floored in too. And I lost dryer, washer, the furnace, all the things. And like, he say, if we call to the governor and we push it, they can help us. But it's something what we have to do together. Like, if you guys have the numbers for, we call and you can give us to do something, you know, try to make prayers for they help us to, you know, FEMA help us. So that is my point. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Patricia Stanford?
Hi, my name is Patricia Stanford, 4413 Hickory. And this is my pictures of my house that got flooded, my basement. I lost everything. I'm devastated. I work hard. My husband works hard. My husband lost three days of work to clean our basement. It's horrifying. I had poop in my basement. My pictures show poop floating around sewage. I can't replace anything. Everything's ruined, everything. My basement stinks, it's horrifying. And I don't understand what happened. I've been there 35 years. It's horrible. And this has never happened before this bad. This is bad. And this is my home. Thank you.
Rodrigo Amoraz?
Rodrigo Amoraz, 4434 Hickory Avenue. That's my neighbor. We got about four or five inches of flooding in our house too. Water heater, deep freezer. We just asking for help. We work hard and we need the city's help. We got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Lopez?
Jonathan Lopez, 400 block Waltham. I'd like to thank, actually, Councilman Mark Kowalski. One of the suggestions he had made was to put bilingual, first English and Spanish on the monthly letters that come out to us. There's a lot of retirees on my block, and I witnessed them cleaning out their basement as well. And I wish there was something I could do. I wish there was something we can all do to help out. But while it's a temporary Band-Aid, I feel like it would be good to have a lot more information about these programs passed out along the city. And if we can afford to send this paper out monthly, it'd be nice to get it in both languages. Or we've got 18,000 followers on our Facebook page that Hammond runs. If you could post something up on there about these programs, maybe we could talk to our neighbors about it, kind of help them out a little bit. Like I said, temporary Band-Aid, but you know, we could all use a little help nowadays. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Rhonda Tyrone?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Tyrone. I live at 1109 Goslin Street in Hammond. I'm here to tell you that for 20 years, September, May, 20 years we've been in this home, that we've been having issues. I call, I complain, nothing is done. For 20 years, I've been calling about the water that sits in front of my house when it rains or when the snow melt. They come and they rocks, maybe some sand. This is at my door. I'm constantly fixing my stairs, which I can't afford. I have worked at both casinos, Horseshoe and Ameristar, so I'm not a lazy person. But I've worked my butt off to where my back is out now. I have to constantly fix this because the water that the city won't come to make sure it goes just down the street a little bit to the drain, happens. Okay? I have pictures of poop, like my neighbors, floating in the basement. And if you guys think that it's the poop that we flush, that we use all day? No, because I also cleaned up condoms. I don't wear tampons, too much TMI, but I don't. Our mayor is crying because people are calling him names. But he begged for this job. He begged for our votes. So do your job. Now that we asking you to put your money where your mouth is, now he want to complain. He should have been here listening to everything that we were saying because we had to listen to him whine. I am physically disabled now. This stuff was sitting up nice and neat. That water and sewage and tampons and condoms was so high that it knocked over everything in my basement. I have a special needs daughter who I make sure she has comforter sheets with the rest of us. But I have to replace all of that. I can't afford that. I lost my mom two years ago. Her stuff is down there that is in this alley now. Washing machines, dryers, hot water tanks. We did not have water for over a week, and half of y'all older than me. So y'all know what it's like to heat up water on the stove and have to wash your butt with it. It's not pleasant, but when you, when you're downstairs sweating, trying to clean this shit up, you have to wash your butt. So I don't know what y'all need to do, go out to dinner when this is over or whatever y'all need to do. Y'all need to do something? Because y'all telling us to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps. When I am rocking this, half the time a push walker, and I have to go up and down these stairs. My daughter have to take off work. This is hard as hell for us. We didn't ask for this. 20 years? 20 years and nobody is doing nothing or nobody came up with anything? But y'all building everything? I have watched that bridge by my house. Next to the bar, I get revamped four times. I've been begging from my street to get something to level the water out. Every time I call, all the valves were open. But I'm getting condoms, tampons, and poop. I hope y'all get it too.
That's the last one signed up for public expression. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.